Welcome, everyone. Beautiful Friday afternoon. Thanks for joining us here in the state Capitol. We're in room 325 for the hearing of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. My name is David Tarnas. I'm the chair of the committee, very blessed to be chair of the committee, and I'm very blessed to have Vice Chair Representative Greg Takayama. And we also have here Representative Kanani Souza, who's always on time, and I appreciate that. The rest of the members will get here in due time. They're probably at other important meetings, and they're probably watching us. So because they're watching us, and a lot of the public is watching us, I ask all testifiers to come on up to the podium, speak directly into the microphone, and as usual, please don't use jargon, please just speak in plain English. Neither Representative Takayama nor I, neither of us are attorneys, so we need to understand you, and so if you could speak in plain English, that would help, and that way everyone else understands you too. For those who are testifying, I would request that you limit your testimony to about two minutes if you could, then I'll ask you to summarize if we get to that. And if you're testifying online over Zoom, please keep yourself muted and your video off until it's time for you to testify, and then after your testimony is complete, mute your audio and turn your video off. If you need to communicate with the technical staff, please use the chat function on Zoom. And if for some reason we have to stop the hearing because electricity turns off or fire alarm goes off, you know, if we need to reschedule, we'll post notice so everyone knows when we're going to be hearing, having the hearing rescheduled, and when we're doing decision-making. If you're on Zoom, please avoid using any trademarked or copyrighted images, and of course, I'm asking all testifiers to practice your best behavior. It's okay to disagree, but let's not be disagreeable. So thank you very much for helping out so we all get through this hearing and we are productive in doing our work. So with that, let's go ahead and start the hearing. First up, we have House Bill 133 relating to the budget of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs, appropriates monies to fund the operating expenses of Office of Hawaiian Affairs for the fiscal biennium beginning July 1st, 2023, ending June 30th, 2025. And we have with us the Office of Hawaiian Affairs representative. Casey, please introduce yourself. Welcome. The floor is yours. Please proceed.
Mahalo, Chair Tarnas, and mahalo members. I am Casey Brown, the chief operating officer for the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. The Office would first like to state that we stand on our written, but I wanted to highlight a couple of things. One, that this bill is appropriating $3 million for each year, of which OHA adds to that more than a one-to-one match, so we put in three and a half million. And OHA sees this as a longstanding partnership with the state, a partnership that, in which all these monies go straight to our beneficiaries in the form of grants. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. If you stick around for questions, that would be great.
Sure.
Yeah, I appreciate that. Unless you want to give us any more details as you're working through.
No, I'm happy to stick around for questions.
Okay, great. All right, let's do that. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Kenneth Conklin with the Center for Hawaiian Sovereignty Studies. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on HB 133? If not, questions, members. Vice Chair Takayama.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. I have a question for OHA. Mr. Brown, in your proposed budget, you have $1 million set aside in the next two years for occupancy-ready housing. And my question is, have you been involved, and to what extent, with the expenditures by the Department of Hawaiian Homelands of its $600 million, which was appropriated last year?
No, not, we haven't been involved with that in terms of what their plan's going to be and how they're planning to spend that, but we, we are, our intentions to be involved are there because we do focus on the occupant's side. So if they're offering the supply, building the homes, OHA sees its role as supporting the demand side. So how do we get the people ready to be able to assume these homes, assume the loans, and move in? So that's why, this is one example of this occupancy-ready grant where we see, and it's brand-new for OHA, so coming out of COVID, we saw a lot of need to support, you know, our people who have had struggles with their rental, keeping up with their rental, the security deposits, utilities. So this was also born out of that need, but we have not had direct discussions about their $600 million in plans, but we intend to.
So if I understand correctly, OHA doesn't actually get involved in the development of housing, but you assist potential homeowners in providing financial advice or at times actual financial assistance?
Correct. So the occupancy-ready grants, which is in our bill, are aimed at actual financial assistance, but we also, we also see ourselves as integrators in that we try to seek out partners who provide literal, financial literacy training, other partners who also provide lending, and OHA tries to facilitate those partnerships. So that's where we see our role in terms of working with the HHL.
Okay, thank you very much.
I have a question.
Representative Souza.
I noticed in Ken Conklin's testimony, he alludes to the fact that, I don't know if he's insinuating that OHA's utilizing money out of the general funds to pay for advocacy for Kaka Kumakai. Is any of this money going to Kuihle Consultants?
Out of, out of the state general funds or any of this in this bill?
Or anything that you have?
No, no state general funds are going to anything with, with the consultant.
So that's coming out of OHA?
Absolutely.
Okay, just checking, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Souza. If there's no other questions, I'd like to ask one myself. Could you help us understand the 1.2 million over the next two years that you've got allocated for legal services? What would that entail?
Sure, Chair. And this is, this is a service we've provided and, you know, funded for, for many years now, and so this entails working with our primary partner here, which is the Native Hawaiian Legal Court. Native Hawaiian Legal Corp. is, is, you know, one of the very recognized groups that serve the Native Hawaiian beneficiaries. And really, it's about, you know, laws that protect Native Hawaiian cultural practices, places, and the families themselves. And, you know, this, just for a couple of examples, this could, this gets and covers a wide scope, a wide range of services. We've seen in the past, you know, water pumping and diversion issues, we've seen fish pond issues, restoration issues, we've seen how they assist with Ohana retaining their lands when they're being evicted. So they represent these families.
Okay, thank you very much. And then final question, could you give us a sense of what your program is that you've entitled AINA: Addressing Impacts of Climate Change? You got $1 million over the next biennium for that.
Sure, sure. This also fairly new zone that we want to offer. This is going to target things like coastal erosion, coastal wetlands, agroforestry, fish pond maintenance, you know, that could, that involves a number of things like wall construction, sediment removal. And we have given out, we have started to give out grants in this fashion, but calling out this area specifically was just, it was just something we wanted to intentionally do because the, the area of climate change grows in importance, so we wanted to call it out specifically.
I appreciate that. I think it's a very urgent situation. I appreciate that the organization believes that as well, and you've identified that as a priority. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much, Casey Brown. Let's move on to the next bill, House Bill 382. And this is relating to the judiciary. It appropriates funds for the judiciary for the fiscal biennium beginning July 1st, 2023, and ending June 30th, 2025. First up, we have Mr. Tom Mick, Policy and Planning Director of the Judiciary. Thank you for being here, sir. The floor is yours. Please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, committee members. I'm Tom Mick, head of the Judiciary Policy and Planning Department. I will briefly summarize our testimony in support of this judiciary appropriations bill. Overall, we are requesting eight new permanent positions and $7.8 million for fiscal year '24 and $6.9 million for fiscal year '25. Included in this is $600,000 for furniture fixture and equipment items for the new Waiauah courthouse, and $500,000 for security, janitorial services, and common area maintenance costs at Halei Helani, our new juvenile services and shelter facility. Another $450,000 is for our First Circuit District Court judge and three related staff, and for two Third Circuit Court bailiffs. $2.3 million is requested for guardian ad litem and legal counsel services, an amount the legislature provided last year, but for one year only. Also being requested is another $2.3 million for, to restore funding for 33 of 192 positions that were defunded during the pandemic. This includes funding for two First Circuit Court judges, or, excuse me, for a First Circuit Court judge, and for two Second Circuit District Court judges. Lastly, is $565,000 for judges' salary increases mandated by the 2019 Commission on Salaries, $600,000 to replace the judiciary's forward accounting system, and $260,000 for our share of the increase in costs for the state's risk management program. For CIP funding, we have six requests totaling $16.2 million. Attached to our testimony are details and pictures relative to this, to these requests. Thank you for the opportunity to present our testimony. We're available to answer any questions.
Great, thank you very much, and I appreciate you sticking around so we could ask questions. Thank you, sir. Next, we have a testimony in support from the Hawaii Access to Justice Commission, Joseph Cardoza, Chair. Testimony in support from Deirdre Marie Iha, Section Chair of the Hawaii State Bar Association Appellate Section. Testimony in support from the Legal Aid Society of Hawaii, Nulani Kaina, Executive Director. Testimony in support from the Mediation Center of the Pacific, Tracy Wilkin, Executive Director. Welcome, please proceed. The floor is yours.
Thank you, Chair. My name is Tracy Wilkin. I'm the executive director of the Mediation Center of the Pacific. We are one of the five nonprofit community mediation centers throughout the state that would receive the benefit of the $85,000 that's included in this bill. And I just want to summarize key points to highlight, over the last two years, our services have more than doubled, nearly tripled, and we don't see that slowing down. Yet, the funding has not been increased, in fact, it was reduced in 2009 and never restored. So we support this bill, and we ask respectfully that this bill is supported as well so that that funding can be restored. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your good work. Next, we have testimony in support from the Kuihakee Mediation Center, Julie Mitchell, Executive Director. Testimony in support from Volunteer Legal Services of Hawaii, Rachel Figueroa, Executive Director. Please proceed. You're on Zoom?
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. I'm testifying on behalf of Volunteer Legal Services Hawaii, and in support of House Bill 382. I stand on my submitted testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And next, we have testimony in support from Rhonda Griswold, Hawaii State Bar Association President. Testimony in support from Vivanne Bowers, Mediation Services of Maui. Testimony in support from Shawna Kamaka. And we have testimony in support from Stan Rorig from my home island. Mr. Rorig, are you on Zoom?
Can you hear me?
Now we hear you, yes, please, go ahead.
Okay. I'm testifying on behalf of the Hawaii Kuihakee Bar Association. We have looked at the details of the budget for the Third Circuit, and we support that. There are a few items that I would, I would like to respectfully bring.
Mr. Rorig, we've lost you. Mr. Rorig, I think your connection must not be very good because we're not able to hear you, and your video has stopped. Perhaps turn off your video and try just audio. Let's give Mr. Rorig just a moment, if you could. Yeah, this, this just points out the need for better broadband in our rural parts of the state. Okay, Mr. Rorig, why don't you try just speaking without the video? See if that works better. Go ahead. No. No, we're not, we're not hearing. Oh, now we hear you. Please, go ahead, sir. Mr. Rorig is usually very eloquent. Sorry. Yeah, I'm sure you're, I'm.
In the, in the air?
Mr. Rorig, we're not able to hear you. I, I'm, I'm so sorry. We'd all benefit from hearing from you, but we can't hear you. So we'll need to follow up with you. If you could, sir, send us it in writing, and we'll make sure to include it in late testimony.
Okay, you can't hear me now?
No, try it again. Okay, I hear you now. Keep going. No, it's not going to happen. Sorry, Mr. Rorig, we're not able to hear you. I, I understand you have submitted written testimony. We will make sure that the committee reviews that, but we're not able to hear you or see you. So we'll have to go on, and I apologize, Mr. Rorig, but we will make sure that, to attend to your testimony that you've submitted in writing. Okay, thank you.
You can't hear me now?
No, no, I think it, it's just not, it's so spotty that we're not able to hear you. I'm sorry about that, sir. We'll just, we will refer to your written testimony. I apologize, Stan. We're going to keep going. Is there any?
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on HB 382? If not, questions, members? Representative Takayama.
If I may, for Mr. Mick from the judiciary. In your testimony, you made reference to the fact that you are requesting, let's see, eight new permanent positions at a cost of $7.8 million and $6.9 million in the biennium.
Correct.
Now, in Table 11 of your submitted testimony, I note that there are actually 342 vacancies in judiciary, and out of these vacancies, actually almost 200 of them are fully funded. Now, you're requesting new positions, and you're still trying to fill almost 200 vacant ones. Can you tell us how we can justify that?
Yeah, I, yeah, I know it would be difficult. I've asked, I asked the Third Circuit, which has two of those positions, the two, well, let me go first. Two of those positions are at no-cost conversions from temporary to permanent, so there's no cost, we're just trying to, you know, so less than the temporary number won't create the permanent. And we have two positions in the Third Circuit, which I've asked, and they initially said that they'd be very difficult because they're really behind, and they're backlogged in everything they do because they've taken vacant positions, funded vacant positions to try and fill some defunded vacant positions, so they need new positions to go forward. But I think in the long run, personally, if you could get the funding for the vacant position, we could re-describe a couple vacant positions if we got the funding. I think we could also do that for the four positions in the First Circuit, if necessary. So the funding is important, whether we get the positions or not, maybe less so.
Okay, okay, so, so I understand your, your, your search to fill your, your already-funded vacancies is ongoing.
Correct.
And at the same time, you're going to try and add eight new positions in addition to your ongoing efforts?
But remember, those are, two of them are not, yeah.
Right, okay. Why is it so difficult to fill your vacancies?
Well, it's just, well, it's just the nature of the position, the timing. I don't have the ages there, but if you look at the age, some are just recent, right? But you got a lot of social workers there, which are difficult to fill. You have juvenile detention workers, which are difficult to fill. I think, you know, that's about the normal. I'm not sure, it's 190, I think you said, but are about 200, yeah? It's just.
193.
Yeah, it's just the cost, or not the cost, just the nature of doing business. There are not that many that are that old.
Okay.
Just turnover. People are leaving, and it's hard to get qualified employees.
But some of your new, newly-requested positions are the same, like bailiff? But some of your new, newly-requested positions are the same, like bailiff clerk, that you're still trying to fill-
Social workers, yes.
Okay, understood. Going to your CIP requests.
Yes.
I, first of all, let me note that in looking through your budget documents, I noticed that you're actually, and I have to commend you, you're returning 1.5 million dollars in money that was appropriated for the Kona courthouse-
Yeah.
And you didn't need, because, for furnishing-
It was for furniture, fixtures, and equipment. The bids came in a lot lower than expected, so.
So, thank you.
You never know.
Thank you, thank you for your efficiency or our over generosity. Thank you.
Whatever.
Now, among your current CIP requests, I noticed your largest request by far is to fix the Kauai courthouse. Needs a new roof. And I, I just have to remark that, you know, this is one of the newer courthouses. It was only open fewer, less than 20 years ago. And this is actually the third phase. You're asking for what, 4.1 million dollars?
Four point something, yeah.
How much was appropriated in the prior two phases?
Uh, I, I can get that for you if you, wait a minute. I think, I can get, I can get that back to you. I, I don't remember-
Okay, thank you.
-but it was over, I think it was over 3 million, maybe.
Okay, and, and can you help us understand why we need to replace an entirely new roof on a relatively new structure?
Yeah, I think there are a couple of reasons. One is the environment that it was located. It's right next to the airport. I'm very close to the airport, and they have environmental concerns. You also get the jet fumes and everything that blow towards the courthouse. I think, secondly, and this is what I understand, maybe the quality of the roofing material that was used was not as good as it should have been, and I'll leave it at that. It just wasn't a quality roof. There was also other things. They didn't build, they didn't put on the roof any way that you could inspect the roof to maintain it, so nobody ever went up there and maintained it. They didn't, there was nothing. There was no hand, handhold, so anybody could hang. There was no entrance, so. I think these all contributed to it, but I would say probably number one is the quality of the roofing material that was used.
Well, I guess we all hope that you have taken steps to remediate the problem in future projects.
Correct, yeah. I hope so.
Okay, thank you. No more questions, Chair.
I'd like to ask a couple. You know, I think this, we've had the same experience with other public construction projects where shoddy workmanship, you know, materials aren't up to par, and we just can't afford this anymore. And here you are going back and asking for more money, and I'm sure it's embarrassing for you. And so, having good construction management and inspection is absolutely necessary. And we just can't afford to keep throwing money after a project because it wasn't done properly in the first place.
I agree 100%.
So, whether it's improvement within, and maybe you weren't managing it, maybe it was, you know, Department of Accounting and General Services that were managing it, and that's, we need to figure out how to do a better job with that agency, because they oversee all these public construction projects. But it is troublesome. It's very troublesome, because the design needs to be suitable to the location. And it's just, so, yeah, I'm not criticizing you as an individual, but I'm just expressing frustration of the committee and of the legislature when this just happens time and time again with public construction projects. So, okay, well, let me ask a, a question about the budget. I understand that there is additional judge in the First Circuit. You have the money in the budget for it, but you, I'm also understanding that you need us to move House Bill Number 385. Could you explain why we need to have the bill, HB 385, since the money for the positions already in the budget that you're requesting?
Okay, the separate bill does not ask for a position or any funding. The separate bill is because you, you have to change the number of authorized positions in the HRS for the number of judges that are allowed. So, this only, the bill only increases the number of jud, judges that are allowed.
In the statute itself.
In the statute itself.
Okay.
That's all.
Got it. Okay. So, members, we'll have to schedule HB 385 quickly, so that we can move that forward in tandem with this, now that I understand that's necessary. Thanks for explaining that. Any other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. And just for everybody, let me just quickly read Stan Rorig's testimony. The H, Hawaii County Bar Association supports House Bill 382 relating to the judiciary. This bill appears to be both the operating budget and capital improvement budget. We support the proposed allocation of staff for the various circuit and district courts as discussed. And if we have any questions, the Hawaii County Bar Association is happy to give us our, give us their, is prepared to comment on the committee's questions. So, thank you, Mr. Rorig, and thanks for your attempt to dial in and talk to us. Okay, there being no further questions on this measure, let's go on to the next one. And that would be House Bill 1040 relating to the Enhanced 911 Board. Amends the statute to add the director of the Department of Law Enforcement or the directors designee as a member of the Enhanced 911 Board. Do we have Department of Law Enforcement, Michael Vincent? Floor is yours. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, and Representative Souza. The Department of Law Enforcement stands in support of this bill and will be available for questions if you have any. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We didn't get a written testimony from you, so perhaps if you could give us a copy of that, that'd be great. Keone, if, if you could work with Mr. Vincent and get a copy of that. It got lost somewhere in cyberspace.
Details, sir.
Yes, that would be great. Okay, and then we have testimony from Victor Ramos in opposition. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on HB 1040? If not, questions, members? Any questions? Nope, no questions. Thanks very much. Let's move on to the next bill. HB 1111. And relating to protective devices for motorcycles, motor scooters, and mopeds, requires operators and passengers of motorcycles, motor scooters to wear a helmet secured by a chin strap. Requires operators of a moped to wear a helmet with a chin strap. First up, we have testimony in support from Department of Transportation. Welcome, Deputy Director.
Thank you, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, Representative Souza. Thank you for having me. The Department of Transportation stands on its written testimony in support of this measure, and I'm here for any questions.
Could you give us some, since there's not very many testimonies on, could you just explain to us why this is important?
Okay, sure. So, in 2021, from our Hawaii State data, we had 33 motorcyclists, motor scooter, and moped deaths. This is a 45% increase from 2020. We found that 64% or 21 of the 33 riders were reported as not wearing helmets at the time of their crash. We also have some data from the CDC, reports that use of helmets with chin straps, 37% of riders and 41% of passengers wearing helmets are effective, helmet-wearing is effective in preventing death. And that helmets reduce the risks of head injury by 69%. So, the Department of Transportation, our number-one priority is safety, so that's why we support this bill.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have testimony in support from Honolulu Police, Acting Major Stacey Tanaka.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, Captain Stacey Tanaka from HPD's Traffic Division. We stand on support of our written testimony for Bill Number 1111, and I'm here to answer any questions.
Thank you very much. And finally, we have testimony from Regina Gregory in opposition. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on House Bill 1111? If not, questions, members? I have a question. I'm guessing for Department of Transportation. We'll start out there. This is a bill from the governor, and I'm sure as a physician, he sees, emergency room physician, he's seen what happens when you have a crash with a motorcyclist or passenger without a helmet. Yet, I know that there's a great deal of opposition out there, even though they may not have shown up today. They probably just didn't know that this bill is being heard. And my concern is that if somebody gets injured, if they're covered by private insurance, would their private insurance take care of their costs, or does the state end up paying for it? That's, that's one question. And then if they're on public-supported insurance, would the state end up being on the hook to pay for their long-term costs if they have terrible closed-head injury? Would you be able to comment on either of those questions?
I have a subject matter expert and safety specialist, Kristi Kouser, on Zoom right now. Kristi?
Kristi, would you be able to help me out, understand this, this question about if, you know, somebody gets injured because they're not wearing a helmet? Who ends up paying for their long-term care? Private insurance, would that cover it, or if they're on MedQuest or, you know, something from the ACA, does the public end up paying for it?
Well, it does depend on how much insurance they have, how grievous the injuries is, and what the recovery rate will be. But as, you know, it's a limit. Depends on if they only got basic coverage. Yes, the public would be footing the bill for that. I do believe the Department of Health has specific information on dollars spent toward that. We can definitely ask them for the information and forward it to you.
Okay, thank you. You know, many times, this issue is framed as something related to personal liberty, and, you know, it's their, they want to be able to ride and feel the wind in their hair as they're riding on their motorcycle. I just don't want the state or the public to have to spend our money to take care of somebody who has got a closed-head injury, and they're stuck, and, and so, that's why I wanted to hear this bill, even though there's a great deal of public, or, or, there's a great deal of concern among legislators about approving it. And so, is that something that perhaps the administration might be able to put together some stronger statements about and get some data for this? Because I think that's gonna be the only way that we can move a bill like this forward, is if we have more data. And maybe DOH is the one to provide that. Is that something that you might be able to work with DOH on and come back to us?
Absolutely. They do have the information. We can definitely get an updated version from them. For the studies, there's many studies that support the use of helmets. What's the, I think, damaging part of it is, there was a, well, the best study is the Hertz study that was done in about the 19, late 1970s, and it's been replicated since then. However, the anti-helmet legislative groups have a tendency to quote the Goldstein Report, which was horribly flawed, and they didn't have a strong database, and so, they quote that. But since then, the, like, we have a, for example, another study that was done in 2016 showed that, you know, supported the Hertz study. So, their analysis showed that motorcycle helmets were associated with a markedly lower risk of head injury and fatal injuries, up to, like, sorry, pulling up my screen here, anywhere up to 37% to 40%. So, the data is out there, and I'd be happy to provide and show you some of these studies.
Okay, I'd, I'd like that. I'm not sure if the Senate's gonna move a measure related to this. I wanted to give it a hearing. You know, members of the committee are, are, we want to protect people, but there's also just concern that we, we might be treading on people's, you know, liberties, right? And so, we'll talk about it in decision-making, but I think that the administration, if you're really serious about this, you've got to really come forward with, with more data and address some of these concerns, so that we've got, you know, some more rationale for moving it forward. So, if you would do that, that'd be great.
We got it. Thank you, Chair.
Okay. Any other questions, members? Sure. Vice Chair Takayama?
I'm sorry, Deputy Director Lee, I wasn't gonna say anything, but, you know, I just, in the case of motorcycle riders, the law does require that you, they be 18 years of age or above. So, these are all adults.
Yes.
They all have some form of insurance, which is required by our motorcycle laws. And so, as, as referenced by Chair Tarnas, you know, I think at some point, we as a society have to rely on responsible adults to make responsible decisions when it comes to their own well-being. Unlike a car, or a truck, or some other vehicle, a motorcycle rider who gets in an accident operator is gonna hit, kill, or severely injure him or herself, and, and that's it. It's not likely that a driver or an occupant of any other vehicle would be, would be injured as well. So, I guess, I'm just trying to express what Chair Tarnas alluded to, was the concern that, you know, maybe we ought to let people take responsibility for themselves in the same sense that we do not ban tobacco smoking by adults or alcohol drinking by adults. Maybe this is something that adults should decide for themselves. But I, I'm sorry, I didn't frame it in a form of question, but thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair. Any other questions? Representative Gannon, bring that microphone up close.
Every time. Chair, I'm surprised by the lack of testimony on this, considering how people seem to be, how passionate people seem to be about this. Is there any information about the way this affects insurance? So, like, does riding, do you have to say that you're not gonna, you're gonna ride without a helmet when you apply for motorcycle insurance? Does it, does it affect people's health coverage? Like, I'm sure there's economic factors that we could be discussing here.
Kristi?
Hi. Yes. As far as I understand, because I'm, I'm a rider myself, the insurance does not ask you, are you gonna wear a helmet? They do the usual recommendations. But from my understanding is, there is nothing to sign off or to say that, hey, I promised to do this. As far as having the, the Department of Health data, I do believe that the information that they have regarding the, the cost of injuries should discuss that. And it doesn't guarantee every rider has insurance, just like a lot of motor vehicle operators out there, cars, there's no guarantee they're having insur, that they have insurance. You won't find out until the crash happens.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Representative Gannon. And any other questions, members? Okay, thanks very much. Appreciate that. You'll come right back up for the next measure, House Bill 1112. This is another bill proposed by the administration. I know it's important to the governor. Relating to truck beds, it repeals several exemptions from the prohibition on operating a pickup truck with a passenger seated in the bed or load-carrying area, including the exemption that allows passengers over 12 years of age to ride in the bed or load-carrying area. First up, we have the Department of Transportation. Floor is yours. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair. I think I forgot to introduce myself. I'm Tammy Lee. I'm the Acting Deputy Director for the Department of Transportation. Thank you for having me. The Department of Transportation supports this measure. Again, it's a safety issue. I do have some statistics. Seat belts, you know, reduce risks of death by 45% and serious injuries by 50%, and this is according to the National Highway Traffic Safety Association. You know, this measure proposes no operators of trucks with truck beds to have any passengers riding in the truck bed. And again, safety is our number-one concern, and I'm here for any questions.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in opposition from Victor Ramos. Testimony in support from Tony Fraschirelli, and testimony in opposition from KLE Arakaki. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on House Bill 1112? If not, questions, members? Representative Gannon?
Again, to the judiciary?
Department of Transportation.
Oh, Department of Transportation, wow. We're, it's Friday, and we're in the judge hearing. Sorry. Do you have any information about states that have put-
Do you have any information about states that have put parameters around riding in the back of trucks instead of outright bans?
I'm going to defer to Kristi, the highway safety specialist. Kristi, did you hear the question?
So what I'm considering is maybe speed limit bans, no chairs in the back. You know, a friend of mine fell out, he was sitting on a skateboard one time when I was in high school. They do silly things like this, right? So like, are there parameters around sitting in the back of a truck in some states?
Thank you for your question. My understanding is, I'm not sure about other states. I definitely can take a look at that. But in Hawaii, you're not supposed to be. You're not supposed to be sitting on the top. You're not supposed to be sitting on the edge or the wheel well. You're supposed to just be sitting down. I don't have the statute right off. I don't know if HPD can help with that, if they have an exact statute on their hands right now that they can pull up for us. But I'd be happy to look at, to see if the, what the other states might have.
Okay, that might be helpful. Also, do you think that if we were to pass something like this, people might essentially, you know, riding in the back of trucks is, if we drive on local roads, we know that's basically a part of local culture. Do you think that people might flaunt this law the way they're currently flaunting, say, laws around fireworks?
I think that with any law, it will happen. So it'll be a matter of enforcement in hopes that people will respect the law. But there's always going to be that few that are not going to follow it, unfortunately. The main thing is, we want to get the majority to follow it so we can lessen the amount of deaths on our roadways.
Absolutely, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions, members? Okay, and we have some research about what other states have done, and we found a good website for that, and we can pass that information on to you.
Thank you.
Okay. Just as an example, some of the other states have said, you know, that if it's a farmer-owned vehicle used exclusively within farming land or a mile between one part of their farm and another, that's okay. Another is employees engaged in their duties, which is often like landscape companies, that would be okay. And then there's others, if you're going out hunting, you could do it, some other states. So if the trip is five miles or less, so there's a wide variety of different carve-outs in other states. And so it is something that, this bill is just prohibiting it.
Yes, we'll take a look at other states.
So again, if the governor is really serious about this, which I know he is, then I would really encourage the administration to take a look and see how we can make it so it's workable. You know, and we have concerns of some families with, you know, it's their only vehicle, and how are you going to get around? People who are going, you know, like I say, farmers in my community. And so I think if we are serious about, if the administration is really serious about this, I would urge you to come back with something that is more workable. Because it's just tough for me to be able to get the support from the committee. I mean, they're nice to me because they like me. But so they probably say, yeah, sure, with reservations, we'll move it out. But then it'd hit the floor, and it'd be all, you know, everyone gets whoo-whoo about it. And then everyone outside in the community reads about this, and then we get inundated with, because we haven't addressed their concern. I think the administration, if you're really serious about this, which I think you are, I think you need to do some of that advanced work and not leave it up to us to do it in the short timeframe we've got here at the Capitol. And so I would urge you to go back and try to come back with something that is really more workable. And, but I wanted to give the bills a hearing, because, you know, these are administration bills. And I think it's important that we talk about it. But we need something more workable in order to get the kind of support we need to get it through the legislature.
I completely understand.
Makes sense?
Yes, absolutely. Thank you so much.
Any other questions, members? Nope, okay, all right, we'll move on. Thank you very much. Next, we have House Bill 556 relating to the Board of Education. It requires the Board of Education to invite the exclusive representative for Bargain Unit 5, which is teachers and other personnel of the Department of Education, to appoint a non-voting public school teacher representative to the board, and the exclusive representative for Bargain Unit 6, educational officers, to appoint a non-voting public school administrator representative to the board. First up, we have testimony from the Department of Human Resources Development, D-Herd. This is Director Brenna Hashimoto. We're thankful to have you here. Please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm actually here in my capacity as the chief negotiator rather than D-Herd. And we provided comments, we appreciate the intent of this bill. However, we do have some concerns about conflicts of interest and confidentiality around collective bargaining matters. And I'm available to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony with comments from the State of Hawaii Board of Education. The chairperson, Arakaki. Testimony in support from Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus. Testimony in support from the Hawaii State Teachers Association. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair, and members of the committee. Laverne Moore, speaking on behalf of President Osa Tooe Jr., President of the Hawaii State Teachers Association. We strongly support House Bill 556, HD1. With, we stand on our written testimony, and I have comments to make. Our public school students are our clients. Our public school teachers are the practitioners who deliver the services to our students in the classroom. The public holds the educators responsible for these services. Hawaii's Board of Education would benefit highly by having a public school teacher and a public school administrator providing insights to the members, as pointed out in our written testimony. Regarding conflict of interest when it comes to our bargaining contract, simple. Both representatives would not participate in the executive session where the bargaining matters are being discussed. To empower teachers' voice in the educational leadership, the Hawaii State Teachers Association asked your committee to support this bill. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from HGEA in opposition. And they're not here, so they basically said that, hey, wait a sec, if you're going to give, well, they didn't say that, but they said, if the legislature finds that the Board of Education would benefit from the perspective of representatives from two bargaining units, they should equally consider the benefit of having the perspective of employees from each of the other bargaining units mentioned above. And that's 1, 2, 3, 4, 9, and 13. So that's from HGEA. Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony in support from Dana Keave. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on 556? Please, come on up, introduce yourself. The floor is yours.
Aloha, Kaiaaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee. My name is Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support of the measure. Anything we can do to support our teachers is imperative to public school education. So we support this measure. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Certainly, thank you very much. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on HB 556? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, let's move on. House Bill 622 relating to suicide prevention makes permanent the Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force within the Department of Health. Requires the task force to focus, bless you. Requires the task force to focus on reducing the suicide rate among Native Hawaiians and Pacific Islanders in the state, and requires report to the legislature. And this one, we have testimony, comments from the Department of Public Safety. Welcome. Thanks for being here. Please proceed.
Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. I'm Gavin Takinaka, Corrections Healthcare Administrator for the Department of Public Safety, for Tommy Johnson, Director. We stand on our written testimony. Here for any questions.
Okay, thanks. Could you actually just, your written testimony, not everyone has read it, perhaps, who's listening to this? Could you summarize it, please?
Sure. We have been, the Department of Public Safety has been a participant of the existing Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force. And we have seen tremendous benefit from our participation with the task force, with their exceptional leadership, their volunteers in promoting suicide prevention within our community. And I guess overall, we just see a huge benefit. And our department has really benefited from participation with the experts on the task force. Over the last five years, we've seen more than 50% reduction in our suicide rate in our facilities compared to the previous five years. So very much in support of keeping this task force going.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Appreciate that. Further explanation, that helps us. Next, we have Department of Health with comments. Welcome. Floor is yours, please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair. My name is Dr. Al Bronstein. I'm the Branch Chief for Emergency Medical Services Injury Prevention, Department of Health. We will stand on our written testimony with noting the two technical amendments to the composition of the group. Thank you very much.
And just so people understand, the technical amendment is correcting the name of the part of your department that was incorrectly described in the bill. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, and also providing a representative from the Behavioral Health Department, of the Health Department.
Okay, great. Thanks very much. Okay, next, we have testimony in support from Deborah Gobert, University of Hawaii.
Good afternoon, here on Zoom. I would like to stand on our written testimony. The University of Hawaii and the School of Medicine, which is named in the bill, are in strong support of codifying this task force and making it permanent, having been members since its inauguration. And also, in terms of the focus, which is already part of our strategic plan, to focus on Native Hawaiians, particularly for our young people, Native Hawaiians and other Pacific Islanders are at increased risk of suicide and suicidal behaviors. So I'm here for any questions.
Thank you very much. And you heard what she was saying, she wants to make it permanent. That's an important consideration, and we'll come to that in decision-making unless someone else brings it up. 622, moving on, we have testimony in support from the Hawaii Primary Care Association, testimony in support from Papa Ola Lojai, testimony in support from Hawaii Family Forum, the Queen's Health System, and testimony in support from Janelle Sugimoto Matsuda, Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force. Welcome. The floor is yours, please proceed.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. I'm Janelle Sugimoto Matsuda. I'm part of the Steering or Leadership Committee of the current Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force, along with Dr. Gobert. We stand on our written testimony. Thank you for bringing this up for discussion, and we're here for any questions this afternoon.
Okay, thank you very much. And testimony in support from numerous individuals, Will Karen, Dana Keave, John Pickle, Kate Wadia Taleka, and Dara Yatsushiro. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify in this measure? Please, come on up.
Aloha, Kaiaaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the committee. My name is Angela Melody Young, and I'm testifying, cares, I'm testifying on behalf of CARES, and we're in strong support of HB 622. The CDC declares suicide is connected to other forms of injury and violence. For example, people who have experienced violence, including child abuse, bullying, or sexual violence, have a higher risk of suicide. But yet, being connected to family and community support and having access to healthcare can decrease suicidal thoughts and behaviors. In 2020, suicide was among the top nine leading causes of death for people ages 10 to 64. And suicide was the second-leading cause of death for people ages 10 to 14 and 25 to 34. And the CDC declares it as a public health concern. It is the due diligence of the legislators to implement prevention, education, and training. I think a lot of people, a lot of times, people will minimize and stigmatize suicide because they are not equipped with tools and resources to address it. There was all the talk about making a pill legal so that suicide can therefore be enabled. So we are presenting evidence and research of an opposing perspective so that US legislators can make the right decision. And lastly, I will conclude, Native Hawaiians are especially vulnerable to this. And the research says that Native Hawaiians that are impacted are ages 15 to 24. And half of the demographic is students in high school. So I think it is wise, as it states in the measure, to work with DOE to address this concern. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. And as I mentioned before, if you could want to submit any written testimony, we'll include it in the late testimony. Thank you very much. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members?
Chair?
Ah, yes, Mr. Goliath. Sorry, I didn't realize you were there. Please proceed.
Oh, I thank you. Michael Loy Jr., Chair of the Stonewall Caucus, the Democratic Party of Hawaii. We apologize for our late testimony. We do want to go on record as supporting this, making this task force permanent. We also are requesting, again, to have a seat at the table for somebody representing the LGBTQI+ community. We're making this request because when you look at the statistics, you as members of the LGBTQI community are three to four times more likely to commit suicide or attempt to commit suicide than their straight or cisgender peers. So that's, we desperately need to see it at the table to make sure that these needs are being addressed by this task force to help protect our Kiki as we move forward. Mahalo.
Mahalo. And for some reason, we did not get your testimony. So if you could send it in again, that'd be great, so we can include it in late testimony. Thanks very much. Okay, anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Representative Gannon?
To the Department of Health. Apologies, I'm having a tough time to stay focused having this discussion. I realize that the reason for taking one's life is varied as humanity itself. You know, like, it's different for a 42-year-old lawyer as it is for, you know, a 10-year-old Chuky's boy who lives in public housing, both of which I've known. I went to the American Suicide Prevention March here in September that was right across the street at Honolulu Halei, and we just marched right around here to the Capitol grounds and met many of the families who've been affected by suicide. In reading the bill, I see that there's, correct me if I'm wrong, 16 individuals on this task force?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And in reading your testimony, I see that on page one, you note that at the bottom, "At the same time period, suicidal deaths in Native Hawaiians averaged 35 per year, 13 per year in Pacific Islanders, Micronesian, Samoans, and others. In the 15 to 24 age group, Native Hawaiian suicide deaths average six per year, and Pacific Islander deaths average four per year." You have someone on the task force related to the Native Hawaiian community, number eight, a member from Papa Ola Lojai. Do you think that it might be helpful to reach out to the non-Hawaiian Pacific Islander community?
Yes, sir, definitely. Some of the non-Hawaiian Pacific Islander communities are much more difficult to reach than the Native Hawaiians. So that was a very good idea.
Would it be helpful to add an individual from this community, say, through a federally qualified nonprofit or from an appropriate nonprofit that does services with this community to the task force?
Yes, sir, especially Micronesian populations.
Chair, that's my suggestion.
Thank you. Other questions, members? If not, thank you very much. Let's move on to the next measure, House Bill 554 relating to campus safety. Requires University of Hawaii students and employees to receive training on sexual misconduct awareness and trauma-informed responses, sexual harassment, sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking. sexual harassment, sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking. Requires UH to ensure that any individual participates in implementing the university's disciplinary process has training or experience in handling sexual misconduct complaints in the university's disciplinary process. Requires the university to provide mandatory annual trauma-informed, gender-inclusive LGBTQ+ inclusive sexual misconduct primary prevention and awareness programming for students and employees of the university. And it prohibits the university from taking disciplinary action against individuals reporting sexual misconduct unless certain exceptions apply. It establishes positions and appropriates funds. First up, we have Dantry Bartoldis, State Council on Developmental Disabilities, in support. Next, we have testimony and support from Jennifer Rose, UH. Welcome, please proceed.
Good afternoon, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takeyama, members of the committee. My name is Jennifer Rose. I'm the Executive Director of the Office of Equity Assurance, speaking on the behalf of the University of Hawaii and specifically the Vice President of Administration, Jan Govea. We rest on our written testimony, and I'm available for questions.
Thank you very much. We have testimony and support from Chris Caulfield, Chair, Democratic Party Hawaii Education Caucus, also from the Imua Alliance in support. And we have testimony and support from Michael Golich with the Stonewall Caucus of the Democratic Party of Hawaii. Michael, please proceed.
Good afternoon again, Michael Golich Jr., Chair of the Stonewall Caucus. We thank you for hearing this bill. We stand in full support. We look forward to seeing this pass. The old adage, "An ounce of prevention is better than a pound of cure." This is a lot of prevention that will help save people's lives, make things better for people, and make things safer for our keiki. Sorry, you turn 50, you get to call people at UH keiki, students. So, all right, actually, anyways, take that back. Students can be any age, whatever. Sorry, it's been a long week, long day. Happy Aloha Friday. We look forward to this passing, and this is what you get on a Friday at 3:00.
Thank you very much.
Have a good one.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it. Next, we have testimony and support from Hawaii Youth Services Network, Judith Clark, Executive Director. Testimony and support from AAUW of Hawaii. Testimony and support from Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence. Testimony and support from Anna Eze. Anna, please proceed.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takeyama, and Honorable Members of the House Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. My name is Anna Eze, and I'm the Co-State Director of the Every Voice Coalition Hawaii, a student-led organization working to end sexual violence on college campuses. I'm also a graduate student at the University of Hawaii at Hilo. I appreciate the opportunity today to testify in support of HB 554. The resources codified by this bill will make the difference for many student survivors between asking for help or staying silent. In 2021, 1 in 5 students living in campus housing reported experiencing dating or domestic violence while enrolled at UH. Pair this statistic with mostly dry dorms at UH Hilo, meaning that no alcohol is allowed regardless of your age, and we see a dangerous situation for a survivor afraid to get in trouble for reporting an assault that involved alcohol. We need amnesty for reporting parties to ensure that safety is the priority in these situations. HB 554 also crucially provides a definition of trauma-informed response for the university. We must ensure that relevant staff at all campuses are evenly equipped with trauma-informed knowledge and skills so no student is re-traumatized when seeking help. In fact, in 2021, over half of student victims did not report to UH due to emotional concerns, including feeling embarrassed, ashamed, or that the process would be too emotionally difficult. According to Rape Abuse Incest National Network, 94% of women who are sexually assaulted experience symptoms of PTSD in the two weeks post-incident. University employees responding to a disclosure of traumatic events like sexual violence must have the skills and tools to respond in a trauma-informed manner. HB 554 equips our communities with both upstream measures as well as essential response measures so we can get campus gender violence under control. Mahalo for your time and for hearing our voices.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony and support from Jesse Gundermann, and testimony and support from Lily James. Is Lily James online? Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takeyama, and Honorable Members of the House Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. My name is Lily James. I'm a 2021 college graduate, and I serve as Co-Executive Director of the Every Voice Coalition, and I'm testifying in support of HB 554. As you just heard from Anna, the Every Voice Coalition is a student, young alum, and survivor-led organization that has fought tirelessly on behalf of survivors and student rights in Hawaii to bring HB 554 before you today. I submitted longer written testimony, and I'll keep my spoken remarks brief, but just want to say that the three components of this bill take truly common-sense steps to ensure that students are able to receive the support they need in order to first and foremost heal from trauma and simultaneously pursue their education. And I would like to add that these components have been implemented in other states before, including Massachusetts, New Hampshire, Nevada, Illinois, Connecticut, and Maine. Hawaii has the opportunity to be the seventh state to take action to prioritize their student safety and make this critical change. But it's something that we cannot keep waiting to address because truly, every year we wait, we are putting thousands more students at risk when we could be doing more. I'd just like, thank you for listening to the voices of students, young alums, and survivors here with me today and through written testimony. And as the group behind this bill, I'm also available to answer any questions committee members may have on the bill. Mahalo.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony and support from Gwyn Long. Gwyn Long is online. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas and Vice Chair Takeyama, and Honorable Members of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. My name is Gwyn Long, and I am a student at the University of Hawaii at Hilo, and I am in support of HB 554 to codify annual prevention and awareness programming around sexual assault on University of Hawaii campuses, as well as establish crucial support for student survivors. During my first weeks of the Fall 2022 Semester, I received an email from the school with the subject "Fall 2022 University of Hawaii Online Title IX Training for Students." The training contained videos and literature designed to help students gain knowledge on how to prevent sexual assault and violence. Though administered in September, the training is open until August of 2023, allowing students to finish the school year having never completed the training. The training was also not required prior to registering for classes at UH Hilo as it was administered after the semester had begun. The 2021 Campus Climate Survey showed that two out of three students did not recall attending any training or info session on sexual harassment or gender violence, and 60% were not aware of the Title IX services. It's extremely important for all students and professors to undergo mandatory training on ways to avoid acting in such a way that can make others uncomfortable or do something they do not consent to. Campus sexual violence is an equity issue, with marginalized groups reporting higher rates of violence than their peers in 2021 while attending the University of Hawaii. With five out of six UH student survivors reporting not accessing university resources in 2021, change is urgently required to help students contact, connect with the help they need to continue their education. Mahalo for your dedication to the health and well-being of UH students across Hawaii. Please pass HB 554.
Thank you very much. And we have testimony and support from a number of other individuals, Ryan Coughlin, Kialani Berg, Cheryl Burkhart, Will Karen, Dana Keave, Jason Mark Alexander, Avery Bryce, and Nancy Sidoun. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? Please come on up. The floor is yours.
Aloha, Kaiaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the Committee. My name is Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support. The purpose of this act is to expand a little bit more the protections for victims of sexual and domestic violence at UH. And it requires them to, or it asks the UH students and employees to receive mandatory training and to be educated about trauma-informed responses. So, you know, research from CDC says that prevention of these bad behaviors requires a shift in culture and climate. So we just wanted to provide comments that there is this idea within the measure to address things after it happens, but perhaps there can be a consideration for a focus on addressing things before it happens. In our capacity as a grassroots, we work with families from KPT, and we notice a lot of these behaviors in the setting within that community and also other communities as well. It's not just there, but other places as well. And it happens also in very young demographics, right? So if there is a way to address it with trauma-informed care, but also getting to the roots of why these behaviors develop in the first place, I think it will be, this is a good idea of, yeah, to address things before it happens. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else wishing to testify in this measure? If not, questions, members? No questions, but I just would like to say thank you to the testifiers. This is a very challenging issue. It's a traumatic experience for anyone to go through and experience this sort that we're discussing here. And I think, you know, sexual harassment, sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, stalking, these are all behaviors that we're seeing far too often. And if you're a victim of something like this, it's hard to speak out. And so I want to acknowledge the courage of those advocates, many of whom are survivors. And so I want to mahalo you. I want to thank you for your courage so that we all can learn about this and try to take some concrete steps to prevent that from continuing. So, and we need to support the survivors in order to move on and reclaim their lives. So I just want to acknowledge your courage and thank you for testifying today on this very challenging and difficult topic. So with that, if there's no other questions, I'd like to move on. Thank you again. Okay, move on to House Bill 1235 relating to Corrections. Appropriates funds for purchasing digital cameras for all guard control rooms at state correctional facilities and body cameras for guards to wear while on duty at state correctional facilities. First up, we have testimony from the Department of Public Safety. Welcome. Thank you for your patience.
Chair, Vice Chair, Committee Members, Michael Hoffman, Acting Deputy Director for Corrections. We stand on our testimony, but I am here for questions if anybody wants to ask.
Just if I could, could you briefly summarize your testimony for those who haven't read it yet?
Yes. So the request is to put cameras in all control stations within our facility statewide, and it also introduced body cameras to be worn by our officers with respect to the Senate Bill, I think, 1471. They deleted the language on the body cameras.
Let's talk about this bill.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry. So we actually are in concurrence with that amendment, and so that is what we have put forth in testimony. We're in favor of doing the cameras.
So your testimony requests that it be amended to delete from the bill the requirement for ACOs, and ACOs mean?
Adult Correctional Officers, the uniformed staff.
Okay, so you're requesting that we amend the bill so the adult correctional officers are not being required to wear body cameras?
Correct. And we encourage and would like, if it remains in the bill, we would encourage a feasibility study so we can fully understand the ramifications and the costs associated with it. Our limited understanding is the cost for the retention of the data is very, very expensive. And there's some other variables that we would have to look into to be able to make that happen.
Okay, and then another part of your testimony is that you've already allocated $1.2 million in federal funds to review your existing surveillance security systems at all correctional facilities statewide and to purchase and install new systems.
That's correct. So we contracted Bowers &amp; Coboda. They're doing the assessment for us now. We should have that report by March 1st, end of February, and that's going to give us an indication of where our starting point is at. I would have to admit that, you know, some of the security electronics, it's pretty outdated, and it does need a lot of work.
Yeah, a lot of non-functioning cameras.
Yes, to say the least. And it may not just be the cameras. It may be the software that runs it. It could be the wiring, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So the initial study is to determine exactly what are we dealing with.
Okay.
Yeah.
Great. Thank you for that further explanation about your testimony. That helped?
You're welcome.
That's very helpful. Okay, next, we have testimony and support from the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. Welcome, please proceed.
Hello, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takeyama, and members of the committee. My name is Kristin Johnson. I'm the Oversight Coordinator for the Hawaii Correctional System Oversight Commission. We do stand by our written testimony. We heavily support this bill. Cameras are absolutely vital in correction facilities, not just honestly to protect the people in custody, which is very clearly important, but also to protect officers when potential false allegations have been put against them. And so it's really a beneficial piece all the way around. The only thing that I wanted to make mention to is potentially deleting the word "guard." It's a pretty antiquated term. It's not really used in corrections anymore, so I just wanted to make mention to that. And thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony from UPW, United Public Workers. Thank you for being here. Please proceed.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takeyama, Members of the Committee, Kamakana Kamala, Government Affairs Manager for United Public Workers, testifying on behalf of State Director Kalani Warner. You have our written testimony, and with the permission of the Chair, I'd like to just stand on our written comments.
If you could just explain briefly your comments about the current draft of the bill no longer requires adult corrections officers to wear body-worn cameras?
Okay, so in the original draft of the bill, it required, it mandated that the PSD, Public Safety, require our ACOs, again, adult corrections officers, to wear body-worn cameras. From our experience, that would require negotiation pursuant to our collective bargaining agreement as well as Chapter 89, HRS. So in our original comments on the original draft of the bill, we thought that there wasn't enough time to actually pull together all the information needed to meet with the compliance. In this draft of the bill, it does no longer requires that guards be, that guards wear, sorry, ACOs, wear body cameras, but by appropriating the funding, you're creating a policy through procurement. And so if they are, if they're given the money, they're going to have to purchase the equipment, and then you're going to have to create a policy that essentially requires ACOs to wear body cameras. So all we're saying is that needs to be done in consultation with the union, and we have to mutually agree upon a body-worn camera system policy.
Got it. Okay, so it is subject to collective bargaining?
It is.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you for that explanation. Appreciate it. And next, we have testimony and support from Kat Brady, Community Alliance on Prisons, and testimony and support from Hawaii Women's Lawyers, and from testimony and support from the Women's Prison Project, Linda Rich. Welcome, please proceed.
Aloha.
Aloha.
So first of all, I want to explain to those of you who don't know who we are, what the Women's Prison Project is. We are a volunteer advocacy group of 42 professional women who believe that it's time to make some significant changes for women in the judiciary and the judicial system and in the correction system. We very strongly support House Bill 1235. I'm sure that members of the committee have been watching the news or reading in the newspaper or Civil Beat recently about a lawsuit that involved not one, not two, but over 50 incidents of sexual assault in the women's correctional facility here. There just is no excuse for allowing that to continue. And we believe that this bill and the requirement for cameras and for body cameras allows a level of protection that has not been there and which actually, protection of vulnerable women who are incarcerated is in the law. You know, there are federal statutes that demand this. You know, there are federal statutes that, that demand this, and it's not happening. This is not a new issue that women are being sexually assaulted in the women's prison. We know from what we've read around this lawsuit, this recent lawsuit, that there are a large number, and Chairman, you referred to this, there are a large number of non-functioning cameras, and that is true in the women's prison. And we also read that it was the lack of cameras in the control rooms that led to making that a safe place for sexual assault to occur. And yes, it's going to cost money to supply the cameras. That's a given. But we're talking about the safety of these women, many of whom are already prior victims of sexual assault in childhood, sexual abuse, very high incidence of that in the women's prison. We strongly support the body cameras. We have seen across the country how that has increased accountability for the behavior of people who are in law enforcement. And I think the same thing would be true for adult correctional officers. So we strongly urge you to pass this bill and protect Hawaii's incarcerated women from the kind of abuse that has been going on in the women's prison. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate hearing from you. We have received testimony support from numerous individuals, Will Karen, Dana Kiave, Tadja Rice, Nanea Lo, Derek Carlin, Valerie Wayne, Cassandra Chi, Elizabeth Nelson, and Elizabeth Bryce Grossman. Is there anyone else wishing to testify? Yes, please come on up.
Aloha, Kayaka, Chair Vice Chair in the Committee. I'm Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong, strong support on behalf of CARES. So camera systems like these have been implemented elsewhere. For example, at the City Council, they wrote a resolution for the Honolulu Marathon, and it implemented this sort of camera system to protect all the people. And then also we see in the red light running pilot program at Finneyard and Lee Leha, they have also implemented this sort of automated camera system because photographic evidence is less likely to be contested in court and because it provides indisputable evidence. So thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? Otherwise, questions, members? Representative Gannon?
To Ms. Johnson with Oversight Commission. The bill seems rather spare. You know, we just heard the testimony from the union representing ACOs, ACOs themselves about issues surrounding...
Adult correctional officers.
Adult correctional officers. The men and women that serve in our jails and prisons who we absolutely value for their service. If we were to move forward on camera systems, does the Oversight Commission have suggestions on rules around how that data should be stored? Who should review that data? How long it should be held within facilities before transferred to another location? These are the kinds of things that seem to be coming up in the ongoing issue around the women's prison. And my experience with the issues around Red Hill, there were off-site contractors that were in charge of using cameras and issues with updating their software and those kinds of things. Do you have any suggestions for an amendment to assist us with developing this bill?
And are you talking about for the body cameras or for the facility cameras?
Facility cameras.
Yeah, I think storage for facility cameras are a lot easier than body cameras oftentimes, mostly because of the amount of body cameras the officers have to wear. But honestly, that's kind of shifting into operations a little bit. And so I would want to defer to Mick Hoffman from the department for that. But I'd be happy to look countrywide and see what other areas do, and I can make recommendations to the department and work with them.
Okay. Can I forward the question to Mr. Hoffman?
Okay, I'm sorry. Can you give that to me one more time, please?
Yeah, I'll do my best. As we're seeing with the issues regarding, I guess, ongoing litigation around the, the cameras that were, might have been operational, non-operational at the women's facility, are you planning to put rules in place regarding how those cameras are kept? Whether or not the department will be doing that, that service work or whether or not you're going to be using an outside contractor? How long you're going to be keeping that information? Whether or not you're going to be keeping that information onsite for, you know, just in the instance, say, somebody, they think they did something wrong, they want to delete that kind of stuff? Like, what kind of rules are you trying to, are you thinking of putting in place around these facility cameras?
Yeah. The cameras, you know, the data, the data storage is always going to be dependent on how long you want to keep it. So there's some venues, 30 days, it's a loop. It begins to, you know, rewrite what it's picking up. You want to go 60 days, costs you more money, 120 days. So that it, it's really, it comes down to a cost factor in terms of how much money do you have? How much data can you store? And how long will you store it? Rules surrounding the cameras, that data is not able to be just easily erased by anybody. The key would be is how long you want to store it. We know sometimes litigation can come up a year, two years later, but we don't have anything from that time period. So sometimes that's difficult. But it can be, I was in a meeting today and as the one practitioner on the consultant team stated, I was in an office space, he said, if, if you want data to be stored for 180 days, you're talking equipment packing this office to do so. So only an assumption, again, it's going to be based upon how much money do we have? As far as rules go, we would be within that time limit of storage in, in terms of the amount of money we have. It would be maintained through a maintenance contract because we don't have people that have that kind of security electronics knowledge. But we, we certainly support and would like to see those cameras get fixed, not only at the women's facility, but all the facilities. I, I think they're even probably more important than a body camera because a body camera, sometimes you see it's not on, you know, these cameras are always on. And if you put them in the right areas and you have enough of them, you will cover the areas that you need to know what is going on if you got to go back and look at something because an incident occurred.
I'm wondering if it'd be possible to put an estimate around saving data for around two years? The two-year mark in my mind is the statute of limitations for most civil actions here in the state of Hawaii. I mean, outside of, of course, sex assault, which, which the statute of limitation is much longer or forever. So could, maybe in, for future reference, we might get an estimate, a ballpark, for how much that might cost?
I can ask our consultants.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other questions? Representative Susan?
Thank you for being here. I just had a question as far as starting the, you know, the program where, where you guys are going to start to execute body-worn cameras. Have you talked to HPD at all as far as what they did, who they're using, the costs associated? I mean, it seems like they started off doing, I believe it was like a pilot program, and they started to, they started in certain districts and then eventually maybe as money came through or whatever the situation was, it expanded to everyone and all police officers. So have you guys conferred with them at all as far as how they went about doing everything? Because it seems like you're coming from a place of, of perhaps a, a lack of knowledge as far as how to get started and all that sort of thing? Just wondering.
Yes, there's been a preliminary outreach through our Sheriff's Division. Director Lo is, you know, talking with our director, Director Tommy Johnson. That is where the first initial information coming from, that data storage from body-worn cameras can get into a lot of money. We also know that we would have to replace uniform shirts for everybody. The shirts that we have now do not, does not have the capability of the camera to be hung on the shirt. And again, as UPW had mentioned, it is a, we'd have to consult with them, we'd have to write policies. There's a lot of other things that we do still need to learn. We could reach out to HPD and try to get an understanding of what they've done and the knowledge that they have as well.
Thank you. Yeah, I just mentioned that because they're a few years in, so maybe that would be a place to start.
A starting place, sure.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Other questions, members? Vice Chair Takayama?
Yes, Mr. Hoffman, nice to see you again.
Yes.
Just from my understanding, at this moment, does the women's correctional facility control room now have a working camera in it?
No.
Okay. It seems to me that, given the fact that it's been the subject of litigation and given the fact that PSD does, Public Safety Department has more than a million dollars, that it, you might want to start there and at least put in a, a functional camera that will, storage is, is a question, but I, you know, there are home cameras, I have one at my house, that will store it for at least a month before overriding it. But it seems to me that you might want to start there immediately because it's, we all know that it's already been the subject of abuse. So why not?
No, we agree with you. We prioritized the women's. I did sit with our consultants today. I was a little bit surprised as to statewide now, not just specific to women's. The cost just to get the head systems of these units put in place so we can then even determine further as to what really the problem is. So they may have 60 cameras that are out in an institution, but until they change the head on it, they don't really know if that camera is out and it's a one-for-one swap or if it's actually more of a software problem. So it looks like there has to be a further analysis. We were hoping initially with this study, we could just simply say, okay, if that camera's out, what does it cost us to put in a new camera? It wasn't that easy. It's not, it's a little bit more complicated than that. However, we still do have some of the ARPA money left over and we're looking at, figure out how we can proceed. We did prioritize women's. So we're going to do our best with what we have, but I have a feeling not only is the system archaic, it's an analog system, it should be upgraded to a digital system. So even an analog camera, if you go to try to get one, it's not that easy. You're going to buy a digital camera. Things don't talk to each other anymore. So I was, I was actually even shocked that how antiquated the systems are, the costs and the, and the technical aspects of trying to put something back together quickly is easier said than, than actually done.
So can you tell the committee what safeguard you have implemented at that specific place in the women's prison to ensure this doesn't happen again?
Yeah, we, we try to assure that the supervisory staff are on the floor more often, doing their checks. We have dealt with decisively any type of actions or any kind of pre complaints that we get to the full extent of investigation and then determining the appropriate outcome regarding the facts of that case. But there's really nothing that's going to replace a camera system that has concrete evidence of what's going on and a constant viewing of a control room.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you very much. Any other questions, members? If not, if not, thank you very much.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate that. It's a very serious matter and we need to provide you the support to address it.
Thank you.
Okay, let's move on to the next measure. House Bill 877 relating to the University of Hawaii establishes the Ho'oukauleke, the Criminal Legal System Institute for Restoration and Healing at the University of Hawaii William S. Richardson School of Law. It appropriates funds. First up, we have testimony support from Kristin Johnson, Hawaii Correctional Oversight System. Almost knocked the door.
Hello.
That was a quick turnaround. Thank you.
It was. We stand by our written testimony. The commission is all for rehabilitation and focus on trauma and foreign care, and I think that this falls nicely into that.
Thank you very much. Do you want to scoot out the door and talk to Mick? Quick, go for it. Okay, next we have testimony support from Camille Nelson, University of Hawaii. Aloha.
Aloha. Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, Honorable Members of the Committee. It's wonderful to see you this afternoon. My name is Camille Nelson, and I have the great honor of serving as Dean of the William S. Richardson School of Law at the University of Hawaii in Manoa. And I'm here to testify in strong support of House Bill 877 HD1, establishing Ho'oukauleke, a Criminal Legal System Institute for Restoration, Healing at the University of Hawaii. I stand on my written testimony, but I would like to underscore and emphasize a few matters if you would allow me to.
Certainly.
As a professor of criminal law, criminal procedure, and professional responsibility whose scholarship explores these areas through the lens of identity, I can certainly testify that there is a long and painful history of oppression of Native people and people of color in the criminal legal system, and Hawaii unfortunately is no exception. Unfortunately scant attention is paid to the societal factors that lead to involvement in the criminal legal system, and little investment is made in rehabilitation, in restoration, and healing as opposed to the copious investment that we make in discipline, in punishment, and in ostracism. The emphasis of this institute on restoration and healing recognizes the complexity of the challenges often confronting people who become involved in the criminal legal system, such as the social determinants of health, which include, for example, economic instability, poor access to quality education, difficulty in accessing excellent healthcare, disparate circumstances in their lived environments and neighborhood contexts, and various other impacts, including societal matters and mental health, for example. These challenges are often desperately impacted, impactful on communities of color and Native Hawaiian communities. They have contributed to intergenerational poverty, fear, trauma, and alienation from and distrust of the criminal legal system. With this institute, we have an opportunity to create a place-based approach grounded in restorative, inclusive, and healing interdisciplinary frameworks, an approach that recognizes and crucially respects the distinct and unique history of this state and which would include Hawaii at the forefront of states grappling with these complex issues. This bill provides a way to solicit and develop community input into the reformation of the criminal legal system here, and it would involve the very people who are most at risk of becoming entangled in its mesh. The problems that this bill seeks to establish and address through the establishment of this institute is of statewide concern. Indeed, it was surprising to learn how disparate the rates of incarceration in this state are in terms of relative comparison to other democratic places. We lead in this respects in, in terms of being a, a location that incarcerates 439 per 100,000 people. That places us in a, in a, I think, unfortunate ranking that we don't want to be near the top of.
If you could please summarize, that would be great.
Sure. So we have arrived at this place through policies, and essentially, we can't do the same thing and expect a different result. So our humble submission and request is that we do something differently, and we believe that the University of Hawaii is well situated through this collaboration from three schools, and we are more than willing to bring in other schools. But this is my humble submission, and I'm here to answer further questions. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you being here, Dean. Next, we have testimony support from numerous individuals, Will Karen, Hans Kurz, Dana Kiave, Nanea Lo, Emily Sarasa, and Conia Freitas. Is there anyone here, anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Please come on up.
Aloha, Kayaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the JHA Committee. My name is Angela Melody Young, testifying in strong support. This purpose of, the purpose of this act is to appropriate funds for Ho'oukauleke, which is, will be like a, a school or program for restoration and healing. And so restorative justice programs aim to address unresolved issues in victims, offenders, and their families. So restorative justice puts victims and offenders at the heart of the justice process by giving them a chance to ask and answer questions and explain the impact the crime has had on them. As mental health resources develop, as we have stepped into an era where ethics is recognized as the moral principle to examine the rational justification for moral judgments, what is more... morally right and what is morally wrong, what is just and what is unjust, we are guided by ethics and the research and quantifiable metrics from these studies and especially mental health studies to transform the criminal justice system. Just putting people in jail is no longer a viable solution. It is the due diligence of the justice system to provide resources for people to change their lives before they offend and after they offend. So, you know, what we heard from Amber, from the collaboration of the Public Safety Committee and the Judiciary Committee is that it is about mental health and behavioral health resources, right? And providing those things to the community, especially in light of the research that is highlighted in this measure that says these ongoing challenges include intergenerational poverty and trauma, insufficient support services, inadequate housing, and are reflected in their disparate, disparate levels of incarceration, right? They didn't have these access to these resources. And then when they are incarcerated, they also need the resources that they didn't have. So, you know, I think the focus is really about restoring and healing. And one last thing, I will conclude, like the speaker before me testified, says that there is, you know, traditionally a focus about punishment, right? And discipline is different. The Bible says, Hebrews 12:5 to 7, "Son, do not regard lightly the discipline of the Lord, nor faint when you are reproved by him; for those whom the Lord loves, he disciplines." So there should be a focus on discipline instead of punishing with justice and restoration. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Representative Gannon.
To Dean Nelson. Thank you so much for joining us this afternoon.
It's my pleasure. Thank you.
Yeah, myself and Representative Susan, we're both proud graduates of the William S. Richardson School of Law.
Well, you make us proud.
Oh, we try to, we try to. Following up on your testimony, the Richardson School of Law has a history of doing this intersectional academic legal discourse. What kind of resources might be, might go into Ho'ou Kaulike? I'm thinking of, say, the work by Professor Levinson with Unconscious Bias, the work with numerous professors regarding the Innocence Project, the, the work of beloved Professor Christie Jima and Professors Matsuda, Lawrence, and numerous others. What, what kind of resources can, can we put into this?
So, starting with the first point, certainly, it's important to recognize that the law is by definition interdisciplinary. I mean, there is, there is increased understanding that while the criminal legal system functions and it doesn't function separate from economic factors, separate from psychological factors, separate from a deep history, disconnected from society. So it's, it's got to be more interwoven with, for example, public health and other concerns. And certainly, what we have to offer is a rich talent pool. You've men, you've mentioned a number of folks. I, I'm also a critical race theorist. We have a number of new faculty who have, are joining us and some have been announced. We have a wonderful Center for Native Hawaiian Legal Excellence and the Ko'oleani Council on campus, but also Kahuluiau. We have certainly increased emphasis on implicit bias. You mentioned Justin Levinson. We have Hawaii Innocence Project. We have Beyond Guilt. We have a number of faculty who I think at core are deeply concerned with disparities, right? And deeply concerned with ensuring that Hawaii is leading in more positive ways in the criminal legal system so that we can all be proud to call it the criminal justice system. So it's not just our professors of crim law and crim pro, criminal procedure, and constitutional law, of course, as well. But I think everybody is deeply concerned with this place and the disparities and the data that we generate. And so I think coming together and having the power to convene is what we offer at the, the William S. Richardson School of Law.
Oh, hi. I felt to mention another graduate is also on the committee, so.
Whoops.
Is it, are, is there some excitement amongst students for the development of a Ho'ou Kaulike?
So I know there's at least one student who submitted testimony. I think opportunities like this attract bright students and they attract our students because our students are deeply concerned with justice. I think we are a school that leads in terms of students who want to make an impact and who want to make an impact locally. I think it's well known that students who opt to come to the William S. Richardson School of Law want to have an impact, not just in Oahu, but in the whole state and in the larger region. So yes, I think we would, this would be a magnetic program, especially if we are in, and able to not just support our existing faculty to do this work, but to recruit additional talent who are committed to this place and to do this work in collaboration with our partner schools and the community members, some of whom you've heard from.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Other questions, members? Seeing none, we'll move on. Thank you very much, Dean.
Thank you.
And I, was there someone else that was going to testify? I think I called, but no one answered, so, so I think we're covered. Okay. Let's move on to Senate Bill 1329 relating to education. It requires the Department of Education to work with certain organizations to develop and implement an active shooter training program in all public schools under the jurisdiction of the department. And it exempts public school students from participation in an active shooter training program of the DOE. First up, we have testimony and support from the Department of Education. And then we have testimony and opposition from Cheryl B. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure? Please come on up.
Aloha, kaiaka, Chair, Vice Chair, and the JHA Committee. Angela testifying on behalf of CARES, and we're just going to provide comments. I think the intent of the measure is good, yet the concerning part is the organizations may not be those who specialize in public safety. It says that DOE shall work with HSTA, Hawaii United Public Workers, Hawaii Government Employees Associations, to develop active shooter training programs. And we attended the informational briefing that the Education Committee held during this session, and they mentioned that there are other entities, state and city departments that could better address this training concern, such as HPD, Department of Emergency Services, Department of Emergency Management from the city. So I just wanted to add this comment, and thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you very much. Anyone else wishing to testify on this measure? If not, questions, members? Seeing none, let's move on. House Bill 579 relating to human trafficking establishes the statewide human trafficking prevention program overseen by the Department of Attorney General to provide services and assistance to commercially sexually exploited children and victims of human trafficking and requires report to the legislature. First up, we have testimony with comments from David Van Acker, Attorney General. Welcome. Thanks for your patience.
Good afternoon, Chair, Vice Chair, members. Just to reiterate our written testimony, we do support this measure. We think it's an important mechanism to move the fight against human trafficking forward. We do, the lone concern would be the timing of the reporting. We are just starting up the Special Investigation and Prosecution Division. I'm the supervisor of that division. We've made some really good progress, making important relationships throughout the law enforcement community to move that effort forward. I think the reporting will only help. We would just ask to move those dates perhaps a year back. I think it would be a more productive report for you folks. Thank you very much for your attention.
Okay, thank you very much. Next, we have testimony and support from the Department of Human Services. Next, testimony and support from Office of Hawaii Affairs. Welcome.
Aloha, aloha, awina la, Chair, Vice Chair, and members. Captain Poi, interim chief advocate at OHA. I did want to note, OHA does stand on our written testimony in support, and we do believe this bill would advance the work and address the challenges identified by the Missing and Murdered Native Hawaiian Women and Girls Task Force. Mahalo.
Thank you for that time correction. Testimony support from Charlene Iboshi, Zonta Club of Hilo. Testimony support from Hawaii Women Lawyers. Testimony support from Betty Lou Larson, Hawaii Women, I mean, Catholic Charities Hawaii. Betty Lou Larson, please proceed. Could you unmute yourself? We can't hear you. She's gone?
She just dropped out.
She just dropped out. Okay, so testimony from Ms. Larson with Catholic Charities Hawaii is in support. Next, we have testimony support from Chris Caulfield, Imua Alliance, and from testimony support from Andrew Crossland, Will Karen, Dana Kiave, Derek Harlan, and then also testimony and support from Cara Jabola Karolis from the Hawaii State Commission on the Status of Women. Please proceed. Nope, not on Zoom either. Okay. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on HB 579? Otherwise, questions, members? Seeing none, let's move on. Final measure on our agenda today, House Bill 580 relating to victim counselor privilege. Expands the victim counselor privilege under the Hawaii Rules of Evidence to include confidential advocates employed by the University of Hawaii. Increases the minimum number of hours of training a domestic violence victim's counselor must complete to be considered a victim counselor. First up, we have testimony in support from Jennifer Rose, University of Hawaii. Thank you for your patience. Please proceed.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Jennifer Rose, on behalf of the University of Hawaii, in strong support of this measure. We stand on our testimony, and we also wanted to express appreciation for this bill being included in the women's legislative package.
Certainly. Thank you. Next, we have testimony and support from Chris Caulfield, Democratic Party of Hawaii Education Caucus, and from, testimony support from Imua Alliance, and testimony support from AAUW of Hawaii, testimony support from the Hawaii State Coalition Against Domestic Violence, testimony and support from Lynn Costales Matuoka, Executive Director Kapilani, the Sex Abuse Treatment Center. Testimony support from Anna Eze.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, and honorable members of the House Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. My name is Anna Eze. I'm the co-estate director of the Every Voice Coalition Hawaii, and I'm also a graduate student at the University of Hawaii at Hilo. Mahalo for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of HB 580. Passing HB 580 is crucial to sustaining trust between confidential advocates and the campus communities they serve by ensuring advocates are truly confidential. No victim should be barred from accessing a confidential advocate because they fear losing control over their story by having it shared without their consent. But in 2021, one in five victims at the University of Hawaii shared in the campus climate survey that they did not report their experiences because they feared it would not be kept confidential. As a student at the University of Hawaii, I'm here to emphasize how valuable the confidential advocate program is and how victim counselor privilege is required to match the responsibility of managing the sensitive information that is a survivor's story. Thank you for the opportunity to submit testimony in support of HB 580 and mahalo for supporting the health and safety of Hawaii students.
Thank you, Ms. Eze. Next, we have testimony support from Lily James. Please proceed.
Mahalo, Chair Tarnas, Vice Chair Takayama, and memorable, honorable members of the House Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs Committee. Hello again. My name is Lily James, co-executive director of the Every Voice Coalition, testifying in strong support of HB 580. Again, I submitted the longer written testimony and will just keep my spoken remarks brief to say that expanding victim counselor privilege is, to include confidential advocates employed at UH is truly a crucial step to ensuring students can access resources and receive the support they need. Advocates serve as a critical point person to direct students to resources, facilitate accommodations, and ensure that lack of knowledge is not a barrier for access. Thank you again so much for listening to the voices of students, and I also want to thank you, Chair Tarnas, for your words earlier. They were really meaningful, and I urge the committee to vote favorably for HB 580. And again, also happy to answer any questions on behalf of the bill.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your testimony. Next, we have testimony and support from Gwyn Long.
Aloha, Chair Tarnas, and Vice Chair Takayama, and honorable members of the House Committee on Judiciary and Hawaiian Affairs. My name is Gwyn Long, and I am a student at the University of Hawaii, Hilo. I appreciate the opportunity to testify in support of HB 580 relating to victim counselor privilege to include University of Hawaii confidential advocates in victim counselor privilege as well as equal training requirements to other victim advocates in Hawaii. Providing confidential advocates on campus will allow survivors to have a safe space where they can begin or continue their healing process. Too many survivors refuse to seek help because they are fearful that their own words and expression of feelings will then be used against them in court. We now have the opportunity to change that by giving survivors a safe space where they can freely express their trauma, trauma in a comfortable, secure, and confidential environment. This is a resource that can be utilized to protect survivors and keep them safe because harboring their trauma can only lead to greater risk, including but not limited to detrimental impacts on their mental health. Mahalo for your dedication to the health of our campus communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have testimony and support from Ryan Coughlin, Kealani Berg, Jesse Gundermann, Dana Kiave, Derek Harlan, Jason Mark Alexander, and Avery Bryce. Is there anyone else here wishing to testify on this measure?
Chair Tarnas?
Yes, please proceed. Introduce yourself and please proceed.
My name is Betty Lou Larson from Catholic Charities Hawaii, and I apologize, I got thrown out of the Zoom right when House Bill 579, the last bill started. Catholic Charities considers this to be a priority bill for us, so we want to stand on our written testimony for House Bill 579. Thank you very much.
I am so grateful you came back. Sorry about the technical glitch, but welcome back, and we register your support for the previous bill, House Bill 579. Mahalo.
Thank you.
Okay. Any questions from members on 580? Nope, seeing none. Thank you very much to all the testifiers and for your patience for being with us on this Friday afternoon. Let's move right into decision-making. So if we go back up to the top of the agenda, papers organized, oh, we got some music to keep us entertained while I get myself organized. So first up, House Bill 133, this is relating to the budget of the Office of Hawaiian Affairs. This is a very important bill. We want to move forward. It's going to go to finance next. I think we are all comfortable with the bill as written, and my recommendation is to move forward as is. Questions, concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 133, passing as is. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Gannon.
Aye.
Representative Holt.
Aye.
Representative Hashimoto.
Aye.
Representative Ichiyama.
Aye.
Representative Iligan.
Aye.
Representative Kong.
Aye.
Representative Mizuno.
Aye.
Representative Souza.
Aye.
Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much. Next, House Bill 382. This is the budget for the judiciary. I want to note for members that we're comfortable, Vice Chair and I are comfortable with the budget. We do have to move a bill that I'll put on the agenda soon, House Bill 385, which actually puts into statute the additional judge in District, in the District Court of the First Circuit. While the actual funding for the judge, this position is in the budget, we need to actually change the, the statute to make room for another judge. So this is our first step to fund the judiciary. I appreciate the work of the judiciary on this one, and we're comfortable with it as is. My recommendation is to pass it as is. Questions or concerns, members? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 382, passing as is. Voting on House Bill 382, passing as is. All members being present. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1040 relating to enhanced 911 board. My recommendation is to move this out as is. I think this is an important measure, and if there's any questions or concerns? Seeing none, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1040, passing as is. All members being present. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, recommendations adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 1111. I appreciate the robust discussion on this matter and the discussion I've had and the Vice Chair has had with a number of the members here. I remember trying to pass or have a hearing on this bill nearly 30 years ago, and it's still an issue today. But I must say that the measure that's brought before us, the administration needs to do a better job, and we've had that conversation with the Department of Transportation. There's lots of issues regarding, you know, these are adults who are riding without helmets. They, you know, we don't want to trample on their liberties, but at the same time, I don't want the state to be on the hook to pay for their long-term care in case they get posthead injuries. So we're not going to resolve this, this session. I've asked the Department of Transportation to go back, do a better job, come back to us with a stronger bill, and do some consultation with the Department of Health and others so that we have a better chance of gaining the support we need to get it through the legislature, because this is a, it's a perilous vote for folks, and I recognize that. Many of you on the committee would have been willing to support me if I wanted to move it forward just out of deference to the Chair, but I don't want to put ourselves in that position. I would like the administration to do more advanced work on it so that we can have a stronger bill. So my recommendation is to defer House Bill 1111. Moving on, House Bill 1112. Same thing here. This is a bill that's come up for the last 30 years, and, you know, we've made some changes in it now, but this bill, as it comes forward, is just a, he thought it was just a simple, straightforward, let's just not allow anybody to ride in the back of the truck, and that just doesn't, it's not workable. We need to have some carve-outs, whether it's for farmers, whether it's for people who are in businesses that have people in the back of the trucks. And also in some communities, these are families that have more people than can fit in the front, so how do we allow them to sit in the back? Maybe we have to have, look at other states, as Representative Ganaden said, you know. So I, again, ask the Department of Transportation, go back and do more work on it, come back to us with a more pragmatic bill that we think we can actually get support for within the legislature. Again, this is a perilous bill to vote for because of our communities, and I don't want to put the members of this committee into a difficult position, even though I appreciate your kindness to support me in recommendations. I want the administration to do more work on this and come back with a more workable bill. So my recommendation is to defer House Bill 1112. Okay? Moving on, House Bill 556. My recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 2, and I would like to incorporate the recommendation of the Office of Collective Bargaining to make sure that they deal with conflict of interest. I acknowledge HGEA's testimony on this, but I'd like to, I don't have concurrence with the previous committee to add more members, and so I would encourage HGEA to work with the next committees, and if it does pass, to work with the Senate. And this will come back. It's got a defective date, so we know it's going to have to go to conference anyway. So House Draft 2, incorporate the amendments, Office of Collective Bargaining. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 556, HD1, with further amendments. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your motions adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to House Bill 622. My recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 2, some technical amendments. I would like to incorporate the Department of Health amendment. I want to, I didn't, I got approval from the previous chair. We have this thing here called prior concurrence, for those who are watching, that in order for me to make changes in this committee, I need to have talked to the committee chair of the previous committee, you heard it, and I was able to do that on a couple matters that I can say. We want to include language in here to clarify that the chair, that the Prevent Suicide Hawaii Task Force members listed in subsection B shall select the chairperson. It's because this draft actually mentions the name of a nonprofit organization, Papa Olo Lohkahi, we can't do that in a bill, because that would be requiring us, I mean, requiring the task force include a private organization that we cannot require the participation of private individuals. So what we would do instead is say that one member of, from a native Hawaiian health and well-being organization, to be appointed by the governor. It has a blank session year for when the report's coming in. The previous chair did not have a recommendation what that would be, so we'll leave it blank. We need to make some technical amendments. I appreciate what Representative Ganaden said about adding a member who has expertise in the Pacific Islander community. Again, I don't have prior concurrence to do that, so I want to add into the standing committee report that the next committee should consider adding a member from a Pacific Islander health and well-being organization. That is my recommendation. Questions or concerns, members? Representative Ganaden?
My appreciation, my appreciation to the Chair for inserting that prospective language for the next committee to look at. I think that we're all going to be unfortunately apprised of the prevalence of suicide in Pacific Islander communities when we start to look at this data. I think that there's several organizations working on it presently that didn't testify, including the East West Center, the University of Hawaii at Manoa, my former employer, Koko Kalih Valley Healthcare Center in Kalih. So I think that adding somebody else to this group is pretty necessary, given that information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other comments, questions, concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 622, HD1, with further amendments. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. House Bill 554. Recommendation is pass out a House Draft 2. I did get prior concurrence from the higher ed chair. Numerous locations in the bill, it has a long list, which has sexual harassment, sexual assault, domestic violence, dating violence, and stalking, and it's, that's mentioned in half a dozen places in the bill, this long list. For better, our folks in HMSO who are writing this up said it's actually more efficient to just use the term sexual misconduct that is defined and just use that word throughout rather than the long list. However, I want to amend the definition of sexual misconduct to include dating violence, and so that we would clean up the language in that manner. We have to modify, we have to make a couple of technical amendments as well in the bill. It currently has a defective date, and then we will include in the standing committee report the request for appropriations, which is a million dollars, and positions, which is four FTE positions. That's my recommendation. Any questions or concerns, members?
HMSO standing for House Majority Staff.
Oh, thank you. HMSO is House Majority's Staff Office, and they are the folks that help us. They are analysts and attorneys who help us write these bills. So thank you, Vice Chair, for making sure I don't use any acronyms. With that, any questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 554, HD1, with further amendments. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your motions adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 1235. My recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 2. I would like to replace the word guard with adult correctional officer throughout. I would like to note in the standing committee report that the requirement for an adult correctional officer to wear a body camera is a collective bargaining issue, and those are my recommendations. So it's HD2 with those amendments. Any questions or concerns, members? Representative Ganaden?
Chair, I'm just concerned that the discussion that we're having around body camera is going to preclude this important measure from passing. I think that in the next committee, they might want to consider either taking out body cameras and discussing that in a future legislative session, or doing, just as you said, really working with stakeholders to ensure we got a good bill.
Good point, and I'd actually be willing to put that in the standing committee report, that the next committee should consider removing the section on body cameras and focus specifically on the fixed cameras in their deliberations.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. I'll put that in the standing committee report. Any other questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1235, HD1, with further amendments. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next bill, House Bill 877. My recommendation is to pass this out as is and put in the standing committee report the appropriation and the positions that are being requested, and that was listed in the previous standing committee report when it came out of higher ed. So we'll just include that in our own standing committee report when it goes to finance, so they'll know what the request is. Any questions or concerns? If not, Vice Chair for the vote for HD2.
Voting on...
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. HD1, it's as is, yes.
Voting on House Bill 877, HD1, passing as is. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Moving on to House Bill 1329. My recommendation is to pass this out as is, but in the standing committee report, I would like to make sure, I would encourage the next committee to consider involving the Hawaii Police Department and the Hawaii Emergency Management.
Yes.
So I would encourage the next committee to consider involving Hawaii Police Department and the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency in developing this program. So passing it out as is. Questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 1329, HD1, passing as is. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. Next, House Bill 579. I'd like to recommend passing out a House Draft 2, making technical amendments only. Any questions or concerns, members? If not, Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 579, HD1, with further amendments. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you. And final bill, House Bill 580. My recommendation is to pass this out as is. It already has a defective effective date, and we'll move it on to finance. Any questions or concerns? Vice Chair for the vote.
Voting on House Bill 580, HD1, passing as is. Anyone wishing to vote W R or no? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendations adopted.
Thank you very much for working hard on a Friday afternoon. There'll be no further business before us. This meeting is adjourned.